I got this meeting information.
You're ready.
Ready to go. Okay, good evening, everybody. I'm calling the works outside the Planning Commission for March 26, 2024 to order and I will begin by stating the opportunities for the public to access and participate in the hybrid meeting are posted on the Albemarle County website, on the Planning Commission homepage, and on the Albemarle County calendar. Participation will include the opportunity to comment on those matters for which comments from the public will be received. With that, I will establish a quorum. Would you call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Moore.
Present.
Mr. Bivins.
Here.
Mr. Murray.
Here.
Mr. Claiborne.
Here.
Mr. Missel.
Here.
Mr. Carazana.
Here.
Ms. Firehawk.
Here.
Thank you.
Great. And next item before I call for comments on the consent agenda, I'd like to ask for a motion to amend our agenda for this evening to include time for public comment on matters not on the agenda.
The move.
Second.
Any discussion? All right.
Ms. Firehawk.
Aye.
Mr. Carazana.
Aye.
Mr. Missel.
Aye.
Mr. Claiborne.
Aye.
Mr. Murray.
Aye.
Mr. Bivins.
I was confused.
Mr. Moore.
Sure.
Great, thank you. All right, I will now open this for public comment on anything not related to the agenda. Anybody online?
There's nobody online.
Thank you for bearing with us. I will now move on to the consent agenda. Do I have a motion on the consent agenda?
Move to accept the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Any discussion? Vote please.
Okay, Mr. Moore.
Aye.
Mr. Bivins.
Aye.
Mr. Murray.
Aye.
Mr. Claiborne.
Aye.
Mr. Missel.
Aye.
Mr. Carazana.
Aye.
Ms. Firehawk.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. You're busy tonight already. Appreciate that. And with that, I will move us to the work session and turn it over to staff. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Missel. Good evening, members of the commission and numerous members of the public. My name is Lea Brumfield. I'm in the zoning department of community development, and I am joined by Rebecca Cobb of the Berkeley Group. In this work session, we'll be presenting Articles Three and Ten for your review and feedback. So as always, these agenda times are wild guesstimates, but our agenda is as follows. Starting with overview of project goals and our work on this phase of the zoning modernization project, then going on depth in the principles on our style guide. The style guide principles are evolving, but they are guiding our work throughout whenever we're drafting the ordinance. So I will be delving into the format and layout of the proposed Article Three on applications and permits, and we'll illustrate some of the changes we're bringing in this draft, and then we'll look at Article Ten, nonconformities. However, the draft changes on Article Ten are more about formatting an organization. And then finally, we'll talk about next steps in Article, sorry, Phase One, and then briefly discuss Phase Two of the project and answer any questions the commission may have.
Lea, can I just interrupt you for one sec? I'm sorry. Just as a matter of process, would you like us to interrupt you as we're going through these slides with questions, or do you want us to wait till the end?
I would recommend waiting at least a little bit longer than you think you need because I'm probably going to answer that in the next slide, whatever the question is.
All right, sounds good. Thank you. No pressure. We're gonna hold you to that.
So as a quick refresher, project goals of the zoning modernization project are to provide streamlined and user-friendly regulations, incorporate best planning practices and current state code requirements, address goals and strategies identified in the comprehensive plan, and consider citizen needs and issues identified through public engagement process. As we talk about different articles, I will be using article numbers for the new proposed ordinance, but to clarify, these article numbers do not map to our current articles. So for example, Article Three of our current ordinance is definitions, but Article Three of our proposed ordinance is what we're covering today, applications and permits. So throughout the presentation, whenever we reference an article number, you can assume that we're talking about the proposed ordinance, not a current ordinance regulation. As a quick recap, initial reset and kickoff work session for zoning modernization project was August 2022. At this time, we determined to update the ordinance to a broad holistic approach as recommended by our consultants, Berkeley Group, as a best practice. December of that year, we shared with the Planning Commission initial findings of the first round of our public engagement and the zoning evaluation report prepared by the Berkeley Group. We did list a lot of best practices, general suggestions for the ordinance. And then, as shown on this slide, in January 2023, we held an open house to present those same findings to the public. In March of 2023, we held a work session with the Plan and Commission again, reviewing drafts of Article One and Two of the proposed zoning ordinance. Article One focused on general provisions of the ordinance. Article Two established the powers and responsibilities of various officers and bodies enabled by the zoning ordinance. So today, we are presenting Articles Three and Ten, covering applications and permits and nonconformities. So Article One, covering general provisions. We addressed that before. It did include the establishment of the zoning map, the zoning ordinance itself, and it referred to a naming legislation for both. It provided guidelines on how to interpret the ordinance if conflicts arose between different sections or even between our ordinance and the Virginia Code. We don't want to step on any toes. So Article Two established the powers and responsibilities of the zoning administrator, Board of Zoning Appeals, Architectural Review Board, and the Planning Commission per Chapter Two of the County Code, and as well as enforcement standards and how to apply fees to applications. So the draft ordinance we're looking at today, Article Three covers procedures and requirements for applications and permits. The first division of Article Three includes common standards and procedures that may apply to multiple application types. The following divisions after that first division address individual application types and the specific standards and procedures that only apply to that individual application type within that division. And then finally, we include requirements and legal standards for public hearings and public required notice. So Application, I'm sorry, Article Ten, covering nonconformities, includes nonconforming uses, structures and improvements, parcels and signs, and that is pretty straightforward. So these phases of our project, I've mentioned Phase One multiple times already tonight. We are in Phase One. We're trying to wrap that up. We are relying primarily on established practice, Virginia law, best practices, and just general good principles of code writing. As we move into our later phases, when we're looking at design standards, district standards, uses, we'll be relying more and more on the goals and the strategies of the comp plan and public engagement with key stakeholders. So that will be the primary focus of those phases is getting that public feedback and incorporating it to make the best practices the best practices for our individual ordinance for our community. In Phase Two, we'll be looking at the community design standards, making up essentially the fabric of the built world. Standards for lighting, landscaping, signs, parking, among others. And I'll be going very briefly into our initial plans for this phase at the end of this presentation. Phases Three and Four will cover standards that affect uses in districts, including which uses are permitted in which districts and what the primary makeup of each district fabric will be. And then later, we'll go into performance standards that govern different types of uses. So these will be incorporating best practices from the needs and values of our community, and so we're really looking to the comp plan for that. And then finally, in Phase Five, bringing it all together, we will have a multiple reviews of these and then a public hearing with this body, and then at the Board of Supervisors for adoption, and at that stage, we'll also be working on general information campaigns to make sure that people don't feel blindsided by the adoption of the new ordinance. So as we mentioned earlier, going into our style guide principles, which is what's forming the backbone of creating the draft of the ordinance, these guidelines are aiming at achieving the project goals we outlined at the beginning, primarily creating a user-friendly regulation. Our style guide principles have been evolving throughout the process, and I will note that most of the examples I'm pulling today are from code that we have written, therefore they're from Article Three and Ten and One and Two, primarily Article Three. These principles will apply throughout the drafting process, so they may be expanded a little bit, but they will be followed throughout the draft. So our first principle, one that guides a lot of decisions, is to avoid jargon. And this includes simplifying text, removing legalistic language whenever possible, but still retaining enforceability in the ordinance. So the example pulled here is from Section 32.2 in our current ordinance, site plan applicability. And we show that we're simplifying when a site plan is required from the current ordinance language to the proposed language, instead of referring back to requirements of Section 32, other applicable requirements, other applicable laws. We're just saying it's required for new uses or development or changes or intensification of use. That is when a site plan is required. It's a simpler way to say all of those things. The second style guide is, in brief, it is to be brief. This example, we have simplified specifications of when the agent may schedule work sessions and how they must determine appropriate times for requiring a work session. This can be stated in one sentence. The factors to be considered, which are described in the first example of current ordinance language, are a matter of zoning administrator policy and judgment. So this is an internal process, not regulation. It can be excised from the proposed draft. Our third principle, using logical and consistent organization. We see here, in the current ordinance, we have the allowance of creating application forms by the agent or the zoning administrator in multiple places for every different kind of application. All these are fundamentally the same. A more logical and consistent organization would be to, instead of repeating the statement, creating common procedures under the proposed Section 3.1.4. That application standard applies for all applications that may be regulated under the zoning ordinance. This creates consistency between the application types as well. Here I have kind of the table of contents, a snippet of the table of contents of Division Three. I'm sorry, Article Three, Divisions 3.2 to 3.7. As you can see, we repeat a predictable pattern within each type of application so that the reader can understand what's coming next. It shows the applicability for the division, followed by the designation of the agent, followed by non-common standards and procedures for that application, and then anything extra at the end. This is just a lot easier to read and simpler, and it is predictable. Along those lines, applying to the, again, entirety of the ordinance beyond what's here today, we are following the Berkeley Group suggested format of articles where we start with article, followed by division, and then subsections and subsections across the entire ordinance. Another drafting guideline that shapes the way we've written is the prioritization of numbered lists. Looking at the example text on the left, we see a wall of text in the current ordinance. It describes when a non-conforming structure may be expanded despite non-compliance with a front yard setback. This snippet of text on the right shows those same regulations in a numbered list instead of a paragraph. None of the regulations have been removed, but the language has been simplified, so it's shorter, easier to read, and in a list format, there's much more white space. It's much more reader-friendly. Kind of along those same lines, creating indented lists, we're trying to avoid more than three levels deep, so we don't have A, B, 1, A, small i, two i's, VI, all the way down. Here you see, first level is action and public hearing. Decision-making body can take the following actions, and then we list those actions. Additionally, we've created regulatory, non-regulatory subheadings, which make the text easier to scan, easier to read and understand. The subheadings are not substantive, but they are very helpful for the reader in approaching the text. As may seem obvious, we're standardizing acronyms throughout the ordinance. Whenever a acronym is used, it's spelled out first at the beginning of a section and then referred to by the acronym for the rest of the section. And then our ninth style guide principle is to use active and inclusive voice wherever possible. For example, in this current section of ordinance text, a special use permit may be revoked by the Board of Supervisors. Instead, we're rephrasing that to say the Board of Supervisors may revoke. That is an active voice and just better English. So we have, of course, removed instances to gender-specific language and are using titles instead of gendered terms throughout. We are stating requirements in the positive instead of in the negative, using may instead of may not wherever possible. And in this example, current regulations for owner initiation of a zoning map amendment or special use permit, pre-application meeting is required unless circumstances are met. In this proposed text, a waiver allows specific exceptions, and it is a positive waiver under these sections. And as a brief digression in creating this presentation, we did notice the error in numbering. I know that that's very important, and the numbering formatting will be corrected before the ordinance is presented again. So one of the first things that we came to the table with in pre-writing the ordinance was to avoid repeating state code. We've removed language where state code is copied directly to avoid just bulking up the text for no reason and also to avoid potential conflicts between our ordinance and future amendments of the Virginia Code. In this snippet, pulled from Albemarle County Code, Section 34.3, we describe who has standing to appeal a decision by the zoning administrator. This section of state code, 15.2-2311, is almost verbatim the same words. Instead of repeating those, that language, we're just including a link to the state code and saying that that section of state code applies.
So I know that there have been situations in the past where legislature has changed in ordinance, but the grandfathered in any locality that is already passed language previously? I'm just wondering if that might cause an issue with us if we are not putting the language of the code in there, and then we effectively couldn't be grandfathered if it changes.
That's a good question. We still need to be mindful to comply with the state code and just not repeat the provisions in our own local ordinance to the extent that the legislature grandfathers or puts into law the existing provisions. The county can certainly have an ordinance that states that, but I think, as is indicated, that this is the better practice not to just rehash what's already in the state code.
Mr. Murray, if that answers your question?
Yes.
Okay, great. We are nearing the end of our style guide principles, so we only have two left. The twelfth one is to incorporate general best practices. And we have discussed a number of best practices, which are some of them covered in the style guidelines, style guide principles that we have talked about so far, but in addition, looking forward, we're also looking at best practices, including things like community design standards that we're pulling from effective zoning ordinances across the state and across the country. We'll be applying these best practices by evidence, by staff research, communication with other planning professionals, and guidance from our consulting group for later drafts. These also, best practices also include things that we're gonna touch briefly on later, like removing application requirements from the ordinance and naming conventions for application types. So finally, we are incorporating tables and graphics throughout the ordinance wherever possible as a as a style guide principle. This illustration on your screen right now shows the application process for a site plan application. This was drafted by some of our staff, and while these illustrations are not regulatory, they are just illustrative and helpful for the reader. They do provide easier reading through the ordinance, and they allow a general understanding of processes, concepts, and design standards especially. So in later phases, we'll be engaging with design professionals to provide a more detailed illustrative regulation, designs of regulations like setbacks, tree canopy screening, things that are a little bit more design-based than who may sign an application. So moving on to the actual drafts we have today. Article Three covers the processes of applications and permits that are applicable under the zoning ordinance. Currently, these processes and standards are scattered throughout the ordinance. Here is the list of places, certainly not exhaustive, but the primary list of places that we're pulling from the current ordinance, from 5.2 to Section 30, 31, 33, et cetera. We'll be drawing the references for things like home occs, entrance quarter certificate of appropriateness, all of these types of applications into Article Three instead of having them scattered throughout. But I will point out, Article Three only addresses the processes of the applications, not the standards for the actual uses themselves. So while we're bringing in the process for applying for home occupation, which is a type of zoning permit, so it follows the zoning permit process, we're not saying what types of home occupations are available or what the regulations are. That's not what we're covering right now. That's gonna be in Phase Four, so stay tuned. The general principles that start at Article Three are essentially common procedures for applications. The processes are standardized across the types of applications, and they allow the different descriptions and standards and procedures to serve as a menu for the application divisions listed underneath them. You will note that the general principles, Article Division 3.1, refers to actions by an agent. This is because the agent, enabled by state legislation, to enact different types of application processes is different depending on the type of application. So in some instances, the agent may be the zoning administrator. In other instances, it may be the planning director. We have used the term agent here to avoid saying the zoning administrator, the planning director, or a designee as appropriate in every other line of this division, in keeping with our second principle of being brief. So kind of illustrating that, on the left here, you have a table of contents of Division 3.1 showing those common procedures in general principles, and on the right is a snippet pulled from the special use permit standards and procedures under that division. So the highlighted sections on the left are called out and do apply to the special use permit processes very explicitly. So pre-application meetings, community meetings, all the application form submission standards, application fees, all of those. Those all apply, and they are described as applying under the special use permit division. In contrast, the standards and procedures for site plans only calls out common procedures for forms, submission standards, application completeness, and all the way through application review and action, which is actually staff review and action in this case. So the common procedures addressing pre-apps, community meetings, and public hearings by the Planning Commission, the board, do not apply, and so they're not pulled in, they're not highlighted in the site plan standards and regulations division. Delving a little bit further into the application of principles that we've described in drafting the ordinance, using special use permits as an example. First, we call out the zoning administrator as the agent for special use permits, saying that whenever Division 3.1 describes a process and we're using that process for a special use permit, the agent is the zoning administrator. And additionally, under each type of application, we describe who may initiate each type of application. And this is different based on the type, so that is not included in common procedures. For example, a special use permit is the only type of application for which an eligible easement holder or electric cooperative may apply for a special use permit without the owner's written consent. So that is called out here. Additionally, some standards and procedures are unique to the special use permits. The common procedures do apply, as underlined here, Sections 3111, 3112, Division 314, but the following additions or modifications also apply regarding public notices and hearings and compliance with Virginia Code. Further on, going further down in the Division for Special Use Permits, the sections that are unique to special use permits include the factors to be considered, conditions of approval, the effect of those decisions, revocation, and voiding. They are called out in this section, and they're unique to that. As we noted before, removing actual application requirements from the ordinance is generally considered a best practice. It reduces the amount of text in the ordinance, avoids confusion for applications that may not require every single requirement, if they're a smaller in scale application, an amendment, or if application requirements change through time. So instead of having this giant list, in the ordinance, we have minimum submission standards. However, the application requirements are not disappearing. They are simply staying as currently provided in a checklist tailored for each application. This is part of our pre-application process. The applicant is provided with this checklist, as shown on the left, that tells them which things they actually need to provide with their application. This is, as I noted, generally a best practice because it can reduce confusion, smooth the application process, and if we need to amend that form, we can do that as a matter of process. We don't need to do that through a zoning text amendment. For example, if we decide that civic space design elements for form-based code need to have electric charging stations, we can have that on this checklist instead of putting that in the ordinance and wasting everybody's time on that. This also, it is fully required by the ordinance because we are including that provision that says in a completed application form is required for this application. The required completed application form includes these items as highlighted by the agent in the special use permit process, the zoning administrator. So that is the legal requirement. And again, I'm gonna harp on this until everybody is used to this term. Special exceptions in our current ordinance are going to be changing to legislative modifications is our proposal. This is just a correction of terminology. In the state code, a special exception is defined as a use permitted by special use permit. So this causes a lot of confusion and ambiguity in our ordinance, and so we're renaming special exceptions as legislative modifications, removing that ambiguity and just avoiding the issue entirely. as legislative modifications, removing that ambiguity and just avoiding the issue entirely. Additionally, in article three, codifying standards for zoning permits, clarifying types of certificates appropriateness that are available. Currently, zoning permits in our ordinance refer only to buildings that do not require a building permit but are subject to setbacks. So that includes farm buildings and sheds primarily and other, other small structures. In, in practice, and as we have applied them as the powers of enabled by the zoning administrator to administer this ordinance, a zoning permit also should include and does include in practice clearances, home stays, family day homes, commercial clearances for buildings like a restaurant or a grocery store and home occupations. Again, as in we're only in phase one, we're only focusing on the processes of those applications, not the substance of the uses themselves. So we are also working with, we've worked with the architectural review board staff, clarifying that certificates appropriateness may be obtained through one of two ways. Both have the same standards, they have two different review processes. One is that the architectural review board reviews the actual application. And the other is that the staff will review the application if it meets certain requirements. So previously, the staff reviewed certificate appropriatenesses were referred to as county-wide certificate of appropriatenesses. And that has been very confusing to developers and the public in general. This hopefully clarifies that process. And we have also tried to organize that section to be more logical and more streamlined. So briefly moving on to article ten, we're covering non-conformities, including uses, structures, parcels and signs. Largely just following stated guidelines of removing Virginia code where possible, translating non-conforming language into plain English where possible. But we are retaining language for Albemarle County-specific non-conformities like critical slopes and country stores, since we cannot refer back to any other ordinances for those. The hierarchy of article ten again follows that structure of a division, followed by sections and subsections, including the actual regulations. This includes, in addition to the previously mentioned ones, repair and maintenance of structures, non-conformities in the flood hazard overlay districts and signs. So as we're nearing the end of phase one, our remaining steps are continuing to solicit final draft feedback from stakeholders, which includes this work session today. Soliciting feedback from community development staff on individual application types that they work with. And meeting with Blue Ridge Home Builders Association and the Charlottesville Area Development Roundtable, which I need to reply to those emails to get those set up. We will discuss the goals that those two groups have previously expressed for us and get feedback for, for the current drafts as well to make sure that we're covering all of the bases that we had intended to cover. We anticipate that these feedback sessions and edits will be completed by June or July of this year, at which time we will return to the planning commission for a final review of all four articles, the whole family, one, two, three and ten. And then in August or September, we will hope to bring all four articles to the board of supervisors for their follow-up work session before moving on to phase two. As the commission is aware, the community development staff is also working on AC forty-four comprehensive plan. Because why embark on one giant project when you could embark on three? Make no small plans. So the zoning modernization project is attempting to avoid leapfrogging in the cop plan. And along those lines, we are hoping to use the actual action steps that the cop plan is drafting right now to get incorporated into our ordinance. As we're kind of waiting for those action steps, it is aligning with that timeline that I've just outlined before. But we know that the public and especially interest groups in general do have a lot of interest in the project and they do have feedback that we don't want to disappear. So we have also created a feedback form on our Engage website, shown at the bottom of this slide. Engage dot albemarle dot org backslash zoning slash modernization, where anybody can provide that feedback. Provides suggestions, things that we need to investigate, just ordinances that aren't working, ordinances that are confusing, things like that. But the, a, as we're getting towards that section of phase two, working on community design standards that are listed here, grading, visibility, lighting, et cetera. We are currently working on the scope and budget requests for this phase, including a request for information for additional graphics work from an outside professional design service. There's a lot more opportunities for illustrations in standards like lighting and landscaping than there are for who may sign an application and what, how many days an application has to be turned over, so. That generally concludes staff presentation. That was about like twenty minutes faster than when I presented to the, to the rest of staff, so good job.
Not to ask questions, so you made it easy.
Excellent at following directions.
Yeah.
Clearly behavior.
Yeah. Yeah, Lonnie stepped out.
But now we do want to know, what general feedback do we have on article three, applications and permits?
Great, thank you. That was really helpful. And you're right, you did answer a lot of questions, at least that I had. So that was, that was great. Also was very helpful to see the current language next to the proposed language. And it's almost like, you know, I don't know if this is ridiculous, but if you ever see those F1 comparisons where the cars are racing and their times are matched and the two are right on top of each other and one gets further ahead and then they get, it would be nice to see almost an overlay of all of the changes that occur, you know, and what that actually ended up looking like. But I know that's a lot of work, so that was very helpful. Why don't we do this before we give feedback on the specific articles? Why don't we just open it up for general questions, if I could? So why don't I start with Ms. Firehawk? Don't want to put you on the spot, but you're on the end there.
I don't know, I have, all my comments are about specific articles.
Okay, great. All right, we'll get to that. Commissioner Carazana?
Okay, I don't have a particular question. I do want to just thank the, I mean, the presentation was well-formatted and put together and answered a lot of my questions. We had had some conversations earlier and think those examples were exactly the kind of things that we were looking for and helped tremendously. I answered my questions.
Thanks.
A great job. And my questions are on a specific section, so I can wait until we get to that point, Mr. Chair.
Thanks. Commissioner Murray?
Jane.
Commissioner Vivint?
Want to continue to thank you for creating a document that is easy to sort of move through. So while your colleagues gave you a hard time while you were presenting to them, tell them the benefit of putting a document together that the commissioners can read and it has page of X or page of Y allows us to be good commissioners and listen to you as you, as you move us through this. So I have lots of questions about particular section. And I can do that because I actually could read it without being annoyed. So thank you so very much.
We don't want to annoy Commissioner Vivint.
Commissioner Murray? Just echoing thanks that it is written in plain language and plain English that sort of halfway educated, non-professional urban planning person like me can understand it quite well. And I did have one very general question, and actually, throughout sort of all the document, there's a lot of references to state code. And I'm just wondering if in the digital presentation of that on our website, we'll have links directly to the, to the snippets.
Yes, absolutely. We currently do have that in municode and that would just follow through as well.
Question. I had a couple of quick questions in general. One is you answered really well, I think, the comprehensive plan timing, because I was wondering how this, you know, was going to sort of move forward and how you were getting ahead of things if the cop plan weren't ready. So that was very helpful. You mentioned, I think it was, was it next steps? You were talking about phase two and you said this also in your presentation, while staff is currently working on the scope of phase two and creating funding requests for this phase. I'm just curious, is that funding? What, what, what do you mean by funding requests?
Just being included in the, in the general budget.
Okay, to actually do the work essentially.
Yes.
Is there any potential that that wouldn't be funded? It seems like it's a sort of a logical thing to have to move forward with.
I think it's, we, we have general support for it. I think that we're looking at the specific numbers.
Got it. Okay, great, thank you. You mentioned simplifying, which it, you know, clearly in your examples, that was very evident. As an applicant, if you think what it might be like to read the simplified text, there's this feeling of relief. Like, oh, great, now I get it, I understand this. There's also a risk, I guess, in that it is so simple that you may miss things or that, you know, the applicant may assume it's simple when in fact there's some extra layers below that are more complicated. So I'm just curious, I don't know if you can answer this, but you must have thought through that as you were looking at simplifying text. And I guess my question is, in a couple of areas in articles ten and primarily in article three that we'll get to, there were opportunities for subjectivity, where it seemed a little bit vague, like there were decisions like, you know, something doesn't warrant the pre-application meeting. Well, why? And how do you as an applicant know? My question making sense? Did you all consider that and think about?
Yeah, so the, this particular example that you're talking about is when an application can or should be exempted a pre-application meeting or a community meeting. Those are essentially currently codifications of what the zoning administrator is allowed to do regardless. That is just a general power of the zoning administrator to make those decisions. And additionally, I will point out that community meetings are actually not required anywhere in state code. We have put that upon ourselves.
Got it.
So those requirements of those factors on when those things are to be considered, by not putting them in the ordinance, it doesn't have to be exhaustive. And then we can apply those selectively to individual instances.
And have conversations with the applicant at the time and say, this is what you should be aware of, these things might be an issue.
Yes.
Okay, so they're not blindsided by that. There was one other example, I think you had it on slide number nine, you don't have to go back to it, but it mentioned for, in a quote as part of the sentence, in a format acceptable to the county. So I was like, well, what does that mean? You know, and I assume there's some clarity available for those kinds of comments.
Sure, so that, that in particular goes back to our third large project that we're doing, the cop plan zoning modernization and our enterprise process permitting and licensing software system that we're adopting right now. So that is the format acceptable to the county is an application through that permitting process.
And that's clarified somehow in here that.
That is, the, the application process walks the applicant through that. It's very formulaic and provides them as much information as they can have.
Great, good to know. Thank you. I think those are my only questions. So with that, are we ready to move on to article three? Okay, why don't I start down at this end? Commissioner Moore?
Sure. Thank you. And again, thank you for the, the whole thing. I especially love the use of active verbs instead of passive verbs. It makes my brain not hurt.
Really quick, would it be helpful for me to pull up the actual ordinance itself?
As chair, are you, do you want us to do round robbins, like, or could it be easier just to move through the sections? And then those individuals have something to say in that section can come in as opposed to trying to encapsulate.
Going back and forth.
Yeah, so if we just like start at the beginning and move down.
So are you referring to like division three point one, start there?
Yeah, and just come through that. I think that might be easier to be able to navigate.
That's fair.
Yeah, everybody good with that?
Sure. And I'm looking over at my colleague's notes. I think he's got more fine-tooth comb edits than I do, but I do have, I do have one question since it was started about section three point one, wondering if we could define agent somewhere in there as we do in three point two, three point three, three point four. It doesn't, I don't see it defined early in three point one.
Sure, so that might indicate that we need to clarify that in here, but the agent is not defined in three point one because the agent may be different people.
Yeah.
So.
I wonder if we could say that, because it just, we just kind of get somewhere in three point one point, whatever, where it's like the agent. It's like, who's the agent? Yeah, that's a, a small thing, relatively speaking, but just, yeah, since we refer to the agent, just want to, you know, figure out who that is, be great, even if it is, could be one of a few people. And then also in three point one, and I'm glad this, this came up, this was like my, my main note when I was reading through this, even though it's way better, even though it's way less wall of text, I still would, would love tables and graphics, like this just begs for a flow chart, you know, three point one. So I'm glad that that's part of the plan. And that's my main stuff on three point one.
Great, thanks. Commissioner Vivint?
How far are we going down in the three point one?
We're going to do all of three point one if we can.
I, I guess I had one other broad question on three point one. You want me to do that first? Okay, thank you. I've got my last broad question and then he's going to get the comb out. I'm curious how the process would change or not change when the applicant is the county itself. Like, let's say we're building new developments near a van station or we're building social housing communities, just, you know, how that would modify things.
Sure, so that is more covered in the actual divisions for the individual application types. So for example, three point two zoning text amendments is actually the only applicant is the county. No one can apply for other zoning text amendments. And so the only standards that really apply are the initiation, so that is just who, who follows it up. If you look down at zoning, zoning map amendments, three point three, point three B, we clarify there that the pre-application meeting is not required if the board of supervisors, the planning commission initiates. So we did try to highlight that. Otherwise, the application is fairly similar. There is an application, there is staff review. And it is generally publicized, the same process, and that is not a change. That was, that's a state code standard requirement and we're not proposing any changes to that.
Thank you.
Questions? These are just questions. So on page four of twenty-four. I just love being able to say that. Section three point one point nine, B. And so my question there is, this is once the application reviews are complete, county staff will schedule the application for review and action by the planning commission, the board of zoning appeals and the AC and the ARB. Ah, it says or, so it seemed like we were throwing the zoning board of appeals into a process where it's either, it's either of these. And so that's what my sense, it might be either of these, not all of them, because I didn't get until I got to the very end and saw or. I'm thinking, well, why would the zoning, why would the zoning board of appeals be scheduled upfront? So it's just a bit of clarity there that I was asking for. Then in, it does the order matter in the next one with three point one point, point ten A, where you say the purpose of a work session is for staff to present information, seek direction on the issues and allow the board of supervisors, the planning commission. So is the order necessary? Because above that, you put the planning commission for, just, are you ordering, are you ordering, are you setting people's expectations by putting the order of the, of the boards or the review process?
That certainly wasn't the intention. I think that most work sessions will be scheduled with one of those bodies, not necessarily with multiple of them. I don't.
I'm not, I'm, I'm just, I'm, I'm reading and saying, okay, is this what you meant with this? And so you can say, no, that's not what I meant with that. Okay. Council's already told me that we can't, from the planning commission, you can't. council's already told me that we can't from the planning commission can't suggest proffers, but maybe someday we will. But that was, that was my reference at three point one point eleven B, where I was hoping that we would be, you were now giving us the magic wand to be able to, um, issue proffers. And I was very excited when I read that. So on three point one point twelve B two A. So the decision-making body will take one of the following actions, refer the application to the agent or to the planning commission. And so I was wondering why, who was the body that was going to send it to the agent or to the planning commission? I didn't understand the, 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 um, the parity there.
Um, so the decision-making body is anybody that makes a decision. Um, that can be the ARB. Uh, in certain circumstances, which are very rare, it can be the planning commission. Um, it can be the BZI, and of course it could be the board of supervisors. Um, so they can, uh, if, for example, the board of supervisors, um, has a public hearing during which they feel that there is more information needed, they can refer the application back to the planning commission and say, you need to have another session on this and discuss this in your body because they haven't discussed the planning implications thoroughly. Um, so that's the reference back to that. Um, or they can, um, say, this application is missing so many different pieces. Staff review needs to be conducted again. You need to get additional pieces of information before we make a decision on this.
I, I appreciate, I appreciate that. So the decision-making body here is a board of supervisors.
Um, or, uh, if it is a, um,
I've never had anything referred. I don't remember anything being referred to us from the ARB.
The ARB might refer something back to an agent.
To an agent. Okay. Okay, that's, that takes care of the parity issue for me. Cause I was like, whoa, wait a minute, how, the only people that have, the only, the only board which is traditionally referred anything back to us has been the supervisors. And I'm just saying, well, I mean, that, that would be an interesting night for the ARB to refer something to us. That, that would, that would be a very interesting night, but, um.
Commissioner Evans, I might point out that it does say as applicable, refer the application to the agent or the planning commission is applicable. So the ARB would be referring its applications to the agent rather than the planning commission.
And or the agent. Thank you.
Okay, great. Chris Murray?
I guess the only thing that I would say is that there's, you know, in the, and streamlining this and removing the actual, you know, forms and, and so forth out of here. I do wonder if maybe there should be some mention or some link to, um, to where those forms could be found, or, you know, or where people could get a list of the forms or that sort of thing.
Um, that is something that we can look into. Um, I think not sure what the best practice would be for, uh, linking out of an ordinance into the website. Um, I'm not sure how that would work with municode because our website addresses can change pretty frequently.
Right. I mean, even if you just said, as can be found on the county website, or, or, or where appropriate, mentioning the actual form name and the code so that people, um, so that when they go to search for it, they can act that we formed them for.
So one of the philosophical discussions that we've had is how much information to include in the county code. In other words, what should be codified versus what information for the public should be put elsewhere. And so one of the movements that, or one of the guiding principles of this is to take some of the um, information out of the county code and put it on the county website instead. So I think what you're suggesting is an excellent idea, but maybe it's best put in as an editor's note or something, because for example, right now in the county code, we've got state law references under each section. Those, that's not part of the code, but it's a helpful to the, to the end user. And we might put in something like editor's note or, uh, applicable application or something that's non-codified, but might be, uh, again, a notation at the end of each section, uh, if there's an applicable form that applies to that section.
Great. Christian Clever?
All right. Um, for three, I'll start with three point one, three, community meeting. And a preface saying this, but this might be a policy and not codified, but it's something I just wanted to think about. And that question is around, for a community meeting, are we, do we feel like we're doing everything we can to be equitable and accessible? Without, within reason, right? And so if a meeting, let's say if they're historically done six o'clock in the evening, well, if you work the night shift, or if you work two jobs, or you don't have childcare, what is that mechanism where you can still get that community feedback? And we might be doing it very well right now, but it's just a question, right, for us to pause and think. Or I call it a pause point for a second. Um, is, are we where we think, do we feel like there's opportunities to grow in that area, right? And so I'm not sure if we're gonna come to a resolution tonight, but something I wanted to kind of pause for a second and just ask ourselves, you know, is there anything else we could be doing? Um, if you want to respond, you can, but don't feel like you have to.
Um, no, so I think that is definitely something that we are prioritizing as a department. Um, and it's hard to change the polit, the, the procedures that we have, but they are definitely procedures. And I don't think that we would want to codify that because then if we decide to change a format, make things, uh, everybody has a phone embedded in their heads, and then we all just join online on Zoom. We don't want to have to change the codification of the, of the language in the ordinance. But that is definitely something that we are prioritizing in our policies and in our actions as we enact the code that is written.
Cool. Thank you. Um, and then the only other one for three point one, I went down to three point one ten work sessions. And let me find my spot. Okay, purpose. And that sentence, uh, where was I at? Okay, under purpose, the last portion, uh, the purpose of a work session is to receive public comments on the application. And maybe say, are we sure? I don't think we've historically have done that. So it was a, are you sure moment?
Sure. Um, we did discuss that. That was another one of those, um, philosophical questions. Um, I think we left it up in the air, and I think that would be a good, what, what, what does the planning commission feel that that should be a purpose of?
Guess one thing to think about is there are multiple ways of receiving public comments. It doesn't specifically say in public forum, right? It talks about public comments in general.
Well, there are certain, uh, public hearings in which public combat comment is mandated to be accepted, uh, but those are just the public hearings. The planning commission otherwise is not mandated to accept public comment generally, except at the mandated public hearings.
Right. Although they, we do receive lots of public comment prior to work sessions.
And, and seek public comment as, as a practice, but I'm just clarifying that that's not a, a requirement of the Virginia code.
Understood. Thank you. But here it could be taken as not necessarily just in public forum, right? Could be taken as public comments that are received via email or some other form.
I'm sorry, which provision specifically are you referring to?
Well, it talks about work sessions and, and or the, um, let's see, that's it, that's it. Seek directions, the planning commission under works actually viewed to receive public comments on the application. I mean, I've received public comments, just not here tonight, for example. Does that make sense? So.
But I can see somebody pointing to that and saying, it says the purpose is to receive comments. It is talking about the work session. So it implies the work session.
Yeah.
Purposes. So I think it, it, it should be changed to, uh, to, um, to allow in-depth analysis on an issue or something like that. Like, that's why we have work sessions.
Think Mr. Barnes wants to, to jump in here.
You're panting back.
He's laughing at me.
What is it?
Oh. I'm, I'm laughing at the, we've had a long conversation about how to integrate public comment into work session businesses this week, so. Well, I think it's a little bit different than we were thinking about earlier, so, um, we'll just.
I just, I just flagged it.
But that's not, yeah, that the work session's purpose is to allow for us to perform in-depth analysis on an issue, whatever, or, or an app, you know, that's why we have work sessions versus just a public hearing. We're not having a public hearing, we're having a work session.
We'll make that note.
Yeah, I think just somehow clarifying that.
Clarify that. Thank you.
But to, to be clear, clarifying it in which direction.
Um, that it's not primarily to receive public comment.
And that's general consensus on the.
It certainly is, is where, it, it, I will, not that I ever think about things that I did when I was chair, but certainly when I was chair, work sessions were work sessions. They were not open to the public. Public could, could observe them. But there are, there are very rare opportunities for the commission to come together and discuss things without having to, um, wrestle with outside comments. I mean, and I, and while it's appropriate for those comments to take place, and it's necessary to the process, but there are things where we just need to have a time to just talk about stuff in an open, in an open arena and have, and to challenge staff and, and also challenge ourselves on certain issues. And so I think the language that my colleague put in there about sort of in-depth sort of analysis is something that I, I would certainly, I would certainly appreciate and, and look forward to see.
And I'll also, I'm sorry, I'm just add, like, we have at times during a work session said, well, actually, we would like to hear some comments from the public, but we don't want to make it sound like it's codified.
I definitely don't want it to be codified.
Yeah.
And I also think that there are times during work sessions where we consider comments we've received from the public.
Sure.
Correct.
And so maybe, I don't know, not the wordsmith, but thinking about how you might re, rephrase that, even if you put, you know, architect review, review board to review public comments on the application.
Well, maybe an, and, and, and in-depth analysis, because again, if you just end it with to review public comments, it really does read like, the purpose is to review public comments. That's the purpose of the work session.
Good comment.
But was it public?
Are you good?
Three point one, I'm good. On three point one, I'm good. Thank you.
Commissioner Karazan?
Uh, can we go to, what you're there, three point one eleven? Yeah. So the, the conditions of approval, um, it, because this is something that comes up every now and then, obviously, and, and there's, well, we're, we're struggling with particular application, and there are some conditions that we would like to, but I think there are some limitations on that, obviously. And I was struck by, uh, some of these are, make a lot of sense, um, impacts to, to the public or surrounding lands. Uh, we've certainly done that before, where there's screening or, and we've added some of that. Uh, but I guess the one that struck me was the performance, um, guarantees or bonds. Can you talk a little bit more about that? Or maybe you can give an example of what that might look like?
Um, sure. So the, uh, example that we discussed, um, for requiring a condition of approval that would have a performance guarantee or bond would be something that would not be bonded in the site plan process, but would be required for the use itself. So if there was a special use permit that was going to really, uh, necessitate screening, um, but it was reusing a building, it's not necessarily going to be, uh, triggering a site plan, uh, which would, um, bring into the bonding process normally, then you could, for example, if the hearing was in January, um, the planning commission reviews it in January, you, uh, the board will be reviewing it in February. You can't plant at that point. So you can't put in screening. So we're not going to just push off the hearing until it's planting season. You can bond, you can recommend a condition of approval to bond that screening so that when it is the season to plant those and they will have a chance of actually running, you could, um, you could require that.
And the performance guarantee is that, so what came to mind to me is if, if, if you're approving on a, on a certain amount of water use, let's say, is it, can you say you cannot exceed X amount? And if, is that a performance guarantee or some?
We've, we've done, we, we, we've done that. We, we've done that. And, and certainly when it's not, when an organization is not tapping into a public water supply and they're, and they're, and so what we've done, or what we've offered is that, um, that have a meter in the hydrant that they're using, and that that meter could not exceed an X amount of, now, I always wonder how do you sort of know that the meter is not exceeding X amount?
So it's, it's a restriction. So I guess the, the performance guarantee, when I, I get the bond. Where does the performance guarantee?
What, what this is more is guaranteeing that certain required improvements are going to be constructed rather than compliance with the zoning ordinance. There are other ways of enforcing water restrictions. But so, for example, if, uh, if a user exceeded the amount of water permitted under a special use permit, that would just be a zoning violation that the zoning administrator could enforce. Again, I think that, first of all, I would say that three point one point eleven is simply, or B is simply declarative of existing law. Uh, and again, one of the conditions that planning commissions in general can require is, uh, these sorts of bond or performance guarantees. And again, I think the main purpose is to ensure that required improvements are constructed.
Thank you. Um, so, so the other, I think it's been mentioned, but, um, some clarifications on, on depth, because someone may just go to a particular section. If there's, you know, an area that there, this is what I'm interested in and what, and, and because there is something like an agent, that, that's, that's come up before, but I think there's some other language in here that having, uh, definitions that people can refer to or reference. Might be helpful, because they, they may not always, so what, what is an agent? I mean, a lot of people won't know. And like you said, it could change from one section to the other. So I think if there's some reference to that or some way for, for the layperson to just understand some of these definitions and some of the terms.
Um, yeah, we, we will have a definition section, uh, as we currently do right now. Um, the current plan is to have all the definitions in that definition section separate from the individual articles. Um, so it would be, I think it's own article actually, um, and then, uh, all of these definitions will be in there and they can be uh, accumulated throughout the process of drafting.
Mr. Firehawk?
Hey, I just had a couple for Article three. Um, so Article three, Division three point one, three point one point two, pre-application meeting. Required D, requirements prior to a meeting. Like, it's a question, um, which is, doesn't a conceptual plan in Article three need defining as to what's included? I'm, I'm asking if we should define what, somewhere in here, what is a conceptual plan? I know what a conceptual plan is, but I've also seen wide, wide interpretations of how conceptual the conceptual plan is. And I feel like we need to establish some standards. Not tonight, but it would be nice to have
Sure.
more boundary around what that entails, so we get what we need for decision making.
I think that depending on, um, how we use the term throughout the rest of the ordinance, we can either define it or, um, this may be one of those policy things. Right now, we currently have a process where an applicant submits a a paper application essentially, or a PDF application that lists what the conceptual plan needs to have on it, and that's on the application form saying, um, a sketch plan showing uh, general dimensions of whatever you're trying to do. Um, and also conceptual plans can vary wildly from, this is a square that I think I want it to be a hundred feet from the property line, but I don't know if I can do that. Can you tell me if I can even have a building on this parcel to, here is a engineered design from, uh, line and grade, and here are the topography lines that we're looking at adjusting for this particular retaining wall. So it can vary wildly.
It is even more vague than what you just said, because we've had quite a few that are just block blobs. Block ten, block six, block four. And then a little narrative, like block ten has got more commercial and block four is more residential and, and, but we, we have no idea what these blobs look like. There's no massing. There's a lot of wiggle room.
Yeah.
You know, so we've been, and so I understand that the application checklist, you know, of like the details will be separate, but I just think conceptual plan is one that we either need to define it better or, or you put a lot of detail in your application checklist as to what you expect to see. Um, somewhere, I don't, you decide, but I, I don't want to see any more block blobs if I don't have to. I'd like to know. You know, because we have turned down applications because, at, you know, for rezonings or whatnot, because we thought that the architectural, uh, excellence was below what we thought was appropriate, or the, the site lacked adequate green space or whatever the reasons. But it's because we had enough information to make that determination. And then we've had to make the same type of determination on block blobs. And, and yet, uh, uh, you know, do we, do we approve that one? We don't know. Maybe their architecture and their, their layout is inferior, but we have no way of judging, but that, that's the same decision with totally different information provided.
Can, can I add?
Yes, please.
I think it's something that's come up multiple times where, you know, just the quality of, of the presentation and whether it's a conceptual plan or even, you know, they're asking us for a special, uh, exception on whether, you know, the step backs is, was a common law in it. Whether, you know, the step backs was a common law in it. And, but we have no idea the topography, there's no sections, there's, there's nothing to actually.
It would be appropriate to grant that.
Is it appropriate on that particular site?
And some others have given us great detail.
And, and some others, it's like more than we need, but so I think there's got to be at least a minimum requirement when you're, particularly when you're asking. For some kind of exception that to be granted, that the information is there to make that decision.
I don't know how you want to handle that. You guys can think on it.
Yeah, I think a lot of that is definitely going to be working through policy and working through their application forms. So hopefully that'll be clearer in what we're requesting in our EPL process through the actual application. Checklists.
Yeah, because we, I mean, we have had this conversation on the dice many times and we were promised. That we would have more detailed and, and not enassing information as well.
Yeah, it may be beyond the scope of what you're doing here, but I just, I think it could certainly, this could help reinforce it.
Yeah, we don't want to lose it. All right. I have a totally different comment now on. Section three point one point three, community meeting. In there, it talks about the purpose of a community meeting is to. Answer, present and answer questions from the public. That is not the only purpose of a community meeting. It's simply say, here's what we're doing. Do you have any questions about our plan? That's, no, I, not, that's not the purpose. That is a part of the purpose. It is also to make the applicant aware of local concerns and site considerations that may inform the applicant's design. Land use, site conditions, or other location-specific context. So I know I said a mouthful and I could text that to you, but the point is, it is not simply to just say. You know, yes, I'm planning to do thirty units per acre. It, it, the point is to hear input. Now, whether the applicant chooses to make any modifications. Based on public input is certainly up to them. But it is to hear from them and to consider those. And that's why we require the public meeting far as we, at least recommended, far enough away from the hearing here. So that the applicant has time to make changes. You know, that's why the staff doesn't say, yeah, you can just have the community meeting the day before. Because if, if it was just to answer some questions and show them what they're already doing, then they don't need any time in between to do any modifications. And I know that lots of really excellent modifications have occurred. Because community meetings, including some where the community was completely against the site. And then came around after a couple of meetings with the applicant, where they're able to listen and make appropriate changes. So can we please add something to the effect that. To also inform the application, applicants' design, or to inform them about site-specific context or, you know, something. Because there also are conditions where, not conditions, situations where. You know, I've, I've sat there and watched community members say, well, there's a pocket wetland here, there's this thing, this is. There's actually a runoff problem where all the runoff is going into my yard from this and the, the designer, the engineer didn't know. So like, thank you for telling me, let, let us look into that and incorporate that. So it, it is to inform them. About stuff they wouldn't know unless they ask the public, so. I know it was a long chant, but I had a role in actually. Getting those public meetings to be required in this county. So I feel pretty strongly about what the purpose is.
Thank you. Great. I just have a couple of quick question comments on three point one. The good news is we only have thirteen left, so we've one down, thirteen to go. I'm coming back to you after this too. Real quickly, we talked about the subjectivity under the required application or pre-application meeting, section three point one point two B. Four, five, and six. I'm just curious, when or is a pre-application meeting not required?
So a pre-application meeting would not be required, for example, if a. Meeting has already appeared before, before the staff for a pre-application meeting. And they're just reactivating a new application. That would be one of the situations. If it was a pre-application meeting where a proposal. Is very simple and small and staff has absolutely no qualms about it, something that is. A very minor amendment to a proposal, like a typo or something that. Technically does still need to be changed through an amendment. That would be the kind of situation that we would look at there.
And would an applicant contact you and say, hey, do I need a pre-application meeting for this?
Probably not. Our, our, our requirement is that it is, a pre-application meeting is required. And then staff would look at the materials that they've submitted and say, actually, you know, we don't need this.
So is it at all, I'm just throwing this out there, maybe fine, but is it at all misleading to just list those three? When in fact, a pre-application meeting, it sounds like is required in every case, but there may be after conversations. A relaxation of that policy.
Well, Mr. Chair, I would point out that there's only three that do require pre-application. Keep in mind that we're consolidating all sorts of other. Matters in this title, for example, appeals to the BZA, architectural review board matters. What we're currently calling special exceptions, but will become legislative modifications. All those other types of applications do not require pre-application, only these three. So that's why they're listed here.
Okay. Got it. Thank you. On section three point one point six, application completeness, and then in application or incomplete applications. One and two, you mentioned fourteen days, ninety days. I didn't see timelines. I saw a few other timelines, but those sort of stood out to me, like for example. Under section three point one point nine, application review and action. Staff review, review by commission and boards. There are no timelines included there.
The staff review would cover so many different things that would honestly be impossible. I have a current zoning clearance for a home, home, home occupation, not home occupation, a homestay. That has been open for a year and a half because they have been building the property and I cannot inspect the property until it is built.
I see. Okay, got it. Thank you. It's good to know. And then we talked about three point one point eleven. I think that was it. All right. Let's go down, let's go to three point two, division three point two, zoning text amendments. Commissioner Firehawk?
I'm all done with three.
Oh, you're all done totally with three?
Yeah, I'm, I'm in Article ten now.
Oh, wow. All right. We have one overachiever in the group. Okay. Commissioner Karazana, two overachievers.
I'm not until three point seven, so.
Three point seven? Okay, why don't we, anybody, how about three point three zoning map amendments?
JR would just suggest that there needs to be on three point three point three B, just make either put hyphens between all the pre's, pre-applications or. Or take them all out.
I can always count on you, Commissioner Vivins.
That's because you make it so easy for me to read. If, if you don't want me to do this, my friend, just do it like some of your other friends. Then they just give us five inches of text. And tell you to read it by Tuesday.
Commissioner Moore?
I actually just wanted to compliment the use of the Oxford comma throughout. Which I, I know I'm being a little facetious about that, but it actually does provide extra clarity, which, and, and we know that commas are, comma placement is very important. It's like the Second Amendment. It's, anyway.
The grammarians are having too much fun down there.
All right, I'm on.
I did have a question. I did have a question. And this is really just a question. So on, on three point three point three B. Can the agent waive a pre-hearing, a pre-application here, a meeting in a zoning map amendments?
That would be referred back to section three point one point two. So. It is required in accordance with three point one point two. And then if we look back at that section. It can be waived under C if those, if the agent determines that it's not necessary. It would be very rare. But it is legally permissible.
I just had one question about three point three. Point three. D three. Action on such applications will not be invalidated solely due to a failure to timely mail this notice. Just curious, it sort of stood out to me, is that the notice that's mailed by the county?
That is the notice mailed in compliance with Virginia Code fifteen point two dash twenty-two oh four.
I'm just curious why that's there. Is it just protect the applicant in case somebody doesn't mail something?
So that is of a copy from our current ordinance. There's no change there. And I think it's just if there's a staff who. In, in mailing.
Got it.
Staff will always attempt to mail things and make sure they are mailed correctly.
Yeah.
But that's. Not going to invalidate the application.
Thank you. All right, three point four, any questions, comments? I just had one on the time to submit. So I'm on. Three point four point three. D. One. Last sentence. For the planning commission's public hearing, proffer, proffers. Whether they're signed by the owners, blah, 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 Department of Community, at least fourteen days before the commission's public hearing on the zoning map. Must be submitted to the Department of Community about at least fourteen. So. It seems a little bit like that's not much time for, unless I'm misreading this, which I may be.
So with the application, that would, the application itself. In the application requirement checklist, that would require the proffers. This is. The signed proffers.
Okay.
So those are the, the more finalized ones that have been worked through the review process.
Got it. Thank you.
So if I might, if I might clarify, Mr. Chair, D one is actually a requirement of the current county code. So the current county code requires proffers to be submitted at least fourteen days for the planning commission. They can be signed or unsigned at that point. D two actually goes a step further in requiring signed proffers. To be submitted at least nine calendar days before the Board of Supervisors hearing. That's actually a change from the existing code, but it's consistent with the Board of Supervisors rules of procedure. So what, what we're, what staff is suggesting to do here is to actually codify one of the board's rules of procedures. To give applicants notice that their signed proffers will be needed at least nine calendar days before the Board of Supervisors' public hearing.
Got it. Thank you. So, so these, so proffers are, are an area where I think it might be useful to actually. Have some of the Virginia Code in the ordinance, because I know that in the past have been things like. Impact fees, for example, that were enabled by the legislature. And then some localities adopted impact fees. But then, but then the legislature took that ability away later. And then those that hadn't already passed in ordinance, didn't have it in their ordinance, they could no longer adopt the impact fees. So, I mean, I would be slightly concerned that. That some of our language or some of the things about proffers are things that we find important. If it's not actually in our ordinance, it could be taken away from us.
So I, I think what we're currently doing is we're currently trying to maximize the enabling authority of the Virginia Code. And what we're, what we're doing here is we're referring to the sections where in the Virginia Code, it's a shall. That locality shall do this, or locality shall do that. I think Albemarle has been progressive also in taking advantage of the places where the state code says localities may do this or may do that. And I don't think that we are changing the county code from what state enabling authority currently allows us to do.
Mr. Herrick has been very careful to say, no, no, we want to keep this one because this is a may, and if we don't say that we, that we will do it. If we may, then we cannot.
A, a, and the only places where we're removing the information is again, where the state law is already self-executing. Regardless of what is included in the county code or not, the state law applies, even if the county is silent on it. Your, your, your point is well taken. I, and to the extent that your suggestion can be implemented, it would, it, it wouldn't be in what we were just discussing regarding the timelines. Because the state code is silent regarding, as I recall, the timing of the submission of proffers.
All right, thank you. Any comments on three point? Oops, okay, where that was it? Three point four, three point five?
The only question I have is on, the only question I have is on three point five. Three point five, three, H two. Where, where we speak to, where we, we speak to that, unless, unless otherwise specified in this chapter or specified as a condition of approval, we're talking about. Where I'm coming from is when we move land from resident, from commercial to residential. Which we've done particularly north of town on, on a couple of, a couple of times, thinking of the Hollymead. Where the food line, remember we moved some commercial land into, to, to, and so it says sign requirements and. Blah, 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 will be the same as for other uses in the district. Is the district defined district for me?
I'm sorry, I think I might be looking at the wrong section.
Page eleven of twenty-four.
I two.
I two.
Oh, I two. I thought you said H two.
There's no H two. Yes, all right. Sorry. What is defined district?
So that would be the zoning district. This is just to say that unless the special use permit provides certain specified conditions. That all other applicable provisions of the zoning district apply, that the zoning district standards apply in that district. Unless modified by a special use permit.
So when we move something from commercial to residential, it then all of a sudden has to be, it has to fall under or follow the, the residential district.
Yes, but keep in mind, this is, this is in the special use permit section, part of the code. But, and, and all this is saying again, is that the underlying district regulations, so, so if there's both a zoning map amendment and. Special use permit, it would apply the, the. The restrictions of the new district plus the special use permit conditions would apply.
I think it might be helpful to add a, add a descriptive word.
Zoning district, perhaps?
I think that would be, that would help.
Thanks, three point six?
Oh, I did have something there. Sorry. You know, this is my thing. So we see this in certain areas where if you don't do something by a specific time, the permit is void. But here, and this is where I, I've been pushing this for a number of years now. If the S U P is not, is, does not spring by some X day, then it's void. I, I would love, because we do that other places.
That, that is something, so are we?
It's K, by the way.
Okay, so we're going back to.
The chair turned the page on me.
Okay.
And I was still, I was still on K.
Yes, so that is a provision that we do have in here. We are allowed to do this. This was. Something that we haven't, we don't have currently codified in our ordinance. But it is permitted under state code, which is, this is just a specification that if you say within the conditions of approval. That a use must commence by a certain time and it does not, then that special use permit is void. However, standard across the board is that a special use permit does not expire. And it's the fundamental quality of a special use permit is that it runs with the land. It is a special use permit that creates that use as particular. And I feel like you have some strong feelings about that.
Yes, because what we're, okay, so we know we're eventually going to get the field school back before somebody. Because the field school had a five-year and it didn't do it in five years and it came up with a. A series of reasons why it didn't happen. And the supervisors, I believe, added on two years to this, being able to do this piece of, this project on Garth Road or Barracks Road, I guess. At some point, what we're doing is saying, here was a good idea that took place, and this I think was. I think this was like twenty-ten. So fourteen years later, we've got a piece of property that's being held under a dream of twenty-ten. And I think either the, the owner of the property or the agents of the property, or excuse me, the owner or. The contracted individual for the property ought to say to the, to the county, no, we're releasing this. Let somebody else do something with this piece of property. I'm also thinking about the piece of property across from the Northside Library. Where the person came in and cried and told us all about his family and the divorce and blah, 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 and the partnership breaking up. That was now seven years ago. And nothing's been done on that piece of property.
I, I think that's actually a very good point. I, I brought this up too, that, you know, when you have these, these things that are proved, but then they sit out there forever. You know, ordinances change, our, you know, our, our county procedures change, you know. Then someone comes back, you know, like twenty, thirty more years later and says, okay, oh, there's this thing, this is on the books, it's approved, I'm going to do it now. But they're doing it by standards that are decades old.
And on three seven, on three point seven point eight A, we actually do have a time period for, for site plans. If a site plan isn't done by X amount of time, then it becomes invalid. And all I'm suggesting is just have the two run together.
Sure. I think that is really why we've included K. So that when these special use permits come. So that when these special use permits come before these legislative bodies. Then if there is something that is time sensitive on this use, then that can be specified within the conditions of approval. Um, in general, because of the nature of special use permits and how varied they are, we don't want to apply an indiscriminate time limit. Just across the board. Um, and, uh, most special use permits, you, you've highlighted some of the, some of the. Issues that we've had with some that have come back and maybe haven't been acted in time. But the vast majority of them don't necessarily need that time limit. So that's really why we have this in here. So when you come across these situations and you say, this is a up and development, up and, up and coming kind of area. You need to worry about your traffic. We're going to put a condition of approval that limits the time that you have to enact this proposal.
I, I have a question. I'm sorry if I can on that topic, an example. So there is one down in Howardsville. Uh, next to the Fish and Games Boat Ramp. Where the owner asked for basically a canoe livery. And there was a lot of controversy around it. So the planning commission at the time, I was not on the planning commission, granted a special use permit for the canoe livery. But they, they said that they had three years and that they would then revisit whether the S U P was appropriate. The canoe livery never actually commenced. There's no equipment down there. There was nothing built. There was a sign put up, but no, no livering happened. So I guess that's my question. Like if I were to go, and I, I don't, I'm not asking you to look this up right now, but like if I was to go on the county's website and look that up. Would I probably still find it saying, you know, canoe livery, S U P kind of thing, or would it fall off? Cause you know, nobody reported it, you know, and county's not like down there monitoring canoe trips. I get, I'm just curious, like. It just strikes me as something like, you know, you can go back in the records and find that they did condition it to three years, but then nobody checks. And is it still sitting like that?
Yeah, that would be, um, that would be, uh, referring right back to J directly above K. Where the Board of Supervisors can revoke that special use permit at public hearing if they are not complying with those conditions.
You'd have to take it back to the board to say, this was never, this wasn't done and nobody revisited it. It's not happening there.
That could be something that could be added to the boards, um, to the board's agenda by whatever the, whoever the concerned party is for that. Okay. Thank you.
I'm gonna pipe in a little bit here. Bart Savota, uh, Deputy Director of Community Development. Um, the other part of J is if you're in violation, uh, we'll call it a repeat offender. For lack of a better term, in any of those conditions, the board can revisit and, and revoke a special use permit that way. Right? So some of our, and if we address the timeframe of the example, uh, Commissioner Firehawk that you used. Um, the processes that we're putting in place will help track some of those approval dates and different things.
Okay.
That occurred in the past. One of the things to remember, when we have this conversation about what happened over the last about fifteen years or more. Is we had the housing crisis, then not only extended all the site plans and rezonings, they extended the special permits. Okay. And then COVID also did the same thing. So some of those things that we're seeing that didn't happen had a extra special grace period of over a decade. Okay. So, so some of those things, uh, it's hard to measure those. So I just want to put that into a little bit of context. That this is the startup trying to implement, you know, some of those things that have expiration. But also the uniqueness of what happened between the housing crisis and COVID lengthens some of those plans to fourteen, fifteen years. Thanks.
I think it'd be interesting. You talk about next steps in your staff memo. And it talks about reaching out to Cadre and to the Blue Ridge Home Builders Association. I think it'd be interesting to hear their thoughts on these kinds of. Items as well, because going through a special use permit process can be value-add to the land. And if you start to change the durations of the timelines or tie it to a site plan or things that are, you know. Affected maybe through the market and through the, you know, ebbs and flows of the market, you may find that it's better to keep it. More flexible, but also have it travel with the land. So I don't know. I just be curious to see what, what they have to say about that. Great. Thank you. Three point six? Three point seven? Yeah. Mr. Clayburn?
Um, I'll go to three point seven point one C. I was curious for, and number five around religious assemblies. Just curious like why, why, why is that an exemption?
Um, the, uh, Arlupa, which is. Uh, what's that acronym for? Um, it's religious assembly uses. Um, the law says that we cannot. We cannot treat a religious assembly use any different from any other use, or sorry, more harshly than any other use. In that zoning district. Um, since we allow assemblies at farm wineries, breweries and distilleries of up to two hundred people. By right, then that means that we have to extend that same permission to religious assembly use.
So the fact that it's by right exemption from a site plan being required. Also make sure I, I understand.
Yes, those uses are also, um, exempted from a site plan.
Gotcha. Thank you.
I had a general, really related question. I'm sorry. Were you done?
Oh, no, go ahead. Been in a conversation. Go, 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 go.
I was just gonna have something related to that is, did any of those six change in this?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
And then it said one more. Um, this is just a comment. I'm not sure if you're gonna do anything about it, but three point seven point six B. This is a practitioner. That's a I got you comment. Any and all applicable laws and regulations and everything. That scares me as a practitioner. That's all I want to say.
Well, we do not, uh, add additional federal requirements to the zoning ordinance. They apply whether we put that in there or not.
All right. Any others on three point six? Sorry, three point seven?
I think I'm good.
Three point eight? Three point nine?
No, it's too late.
Well, I have a question.
It was like an option. You missed it.
I have a question. I have a question. On page fifteen to twenty-four. Is it possible to combine? B two and C three? And just do some language, some language sort of change in here, because you're saying above, it has to be prepared and sign. Well, it has to be prepared, but then below it says it has to be signed and sealed. So why don't we just like combine those two and say they have to be signed and sealed?
Because they don't need to be signed and sealed when they're submitted. We don't want them to be signed and sealed when they're submitted. We want them to be signed and sealed after they have made the changes that we have requested.
One's an application one.
I see. Yeah. We don't get that kind of permission when you're an attorney. You just have to, it comes out on a piece of paper. It's gotta be right. We don't get this twice at the apple foolishness.
Three point eight? All right. Three point.
Three point seven. So it has to, it says that, uh, maintenance of improvements, they have to be maintained in perpetu- in perpetuity by the owner. So. Is it each successive owner? So by any owner? So it's not the owner who did it because that person could be, you know, shuffled off their mortal coil. But is it, so are we talking about the current owner?
Sure. It's not, um, when we talk about the owner, it's not the, um. Uh, standard of wording that we use where we refer to previous presidents as Mr. President. Um, it is the owner. There is only one owner and that is the person who, person or entity who owns that property.
Okay. Thank you. And on the bonding, I know we had a couple of conversations on the bond. Is there, do we have really somebody in-house or a department that really takes, that really looks at bonding?
Oh, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Is, it is a very, very thorough amount of work to do.
No, I know. I just, I just, we don't, only at least some of us here do.
Yeah, for sure.
The rest of us is not ever engaged and I was just fascinated by, by that. Thank you.
Uh, three point eight? I had a couple of questions, just one general question on three point eight point three B administrative certificate of appropriateness. I'm just curious, have there been any changes requested in this section or any, are there any in the works?
Um, so, uh, would there have been some changes as far as consolidation? Um, where some of the uses have been, uh, described using one sentence instead of two. The actual standards that are being, um, requested here, those have not changed. This is, um, we copy pasted from the current ordinance, put it in here, and then where there was some tightening that could happen. That happened, but as far as actual permissions, that has not changed.
Thank you. Three point nine? Three point ten? How about any on the rest of the article three? Any comments on the rest of article three?
I didn't know that tenants were able to ask for a zoning permit. It's the only place that we have tenants.
So that would include something like a, um, restaurant requesting a zoning clearance. Uh, they don't own the building, but they are allowed to request a zoning clearance.
Thank you.
Great. Uh, any other from staff, any other thoughts, questions for us on through, uh, article three?
I think I've talked enough. I was coughing earlier.
All right. It's good. Well, we have water. Do you like some?
I'm good. Thanks.
Why don't we go to article ten? And since it's relatively short, maybe just open it up for any comments on the entire article and we'll start down at this end.
Red. She's red.
I knew you were red.
There I, I, okay. I know. I love, okay. Let me say this right. I appreciate all the great writing and the fact that I don't have very many comments is a testament to your excellent work. But there was one thing that I couldn't understand and I kept reading it. Maybe it's only me. It was article ten. Article ten point two. D one. A. Becomes less non-conforming than the original non-conforming use. I read that over and over and I could not understand. What is that trying to say?
So this is one of those situations where we tried so hard to make this make sense. And it is just, we are limited by the requirements.
Can you just tell me in plain English what it was supposed to mean?
Sure. Um, so it, if there is, um, a use, uh, that is located. Uh, on a parcel that, uh, would not otherwise permit that use. But it's a non-conforming use, so it's allowed to continue. It can become more. Uh, it can become less non-conforming. It can become more.
Why can't we just say more conforming than less non-conforming than the non-conforming use?
Because it may not become more conforming. It may just be less conforming. Less non-conforming. There's, there's, there's a, there's a line.
Understand that.
So there's a line, think about a line that's zero and you're trying to reach that line. And above the line is conforming and below the line is non-conforming. You're trying to reach that line, but you're not actually in the conforming section yet. It's not more conforming. It's just less non-conforming.
So it's, the non-conforming use is abandoned and can't resume if it becomes less non-conforming. Why?
I wonder if an example would. Well, so for example, if, if the intensity of the non-conforming use is reduced, so for example, and this may not be a good example. But suppose that you had a commercial, a, a garage in what became a residential area. And you had, it was a, let's call it a two-bay commercial garage in a residential area that was continuing on as illegally non-conforming use. If the, uh, owner of the property gives up use of one of the bays of the garage, so that they're only using one of the bays of the garage going forward. They can't go back to two at some later point. They, they have, they, they can continue with the one bay because they're, they're using that. And that's less non-conforming than the two-bay garage.
Can't become more non-conforming after they were less.
Well, and, and I think the point that Ms. Brumfeld is making is just from a usage perspective, it's not, it's not yet conforming. It's still in the, it's still in the non-conforming zone.
I just suggest to you that if I can't understand it, and I'm no sage, but like, I think other people will also not understand this. I went to planning school. I don't, I understand your example, but just the reading of just that text. If you don't happen to have an esteemed attorney who knows land planning sitting next to you, as I do. I just think if you guys can do anything to help that thing. Okay.
That's the point. You gotta hire an esteemed attorney to sit next to you.
That's right. You're like, uh, press here for, to talk to Andy.
We're a great zoning staff.
Yeah. Okay. I, and I have like a minor question for later, but we can go on. So I can, I'll ask it later.
All right.
I'll stay in the non-conforming. Um, so ten point two point one. Thank you. This is just a clarification, but it's, it's worse. Yes, sorry. B. The establishment of non-conforming use. The casual intermittent temporary or. Illegal use of land or structures is not sufficient to establish non-conforming use. So you can have an illegal function, but it, it was, could still be conforming.
No.
It says or.
This, this is.
Temporary, you know, the temporary illegal use and then it goes away, but it says or illegal.
Um, so, uh, the, um, the, the. Section here is saying that just because you start using something, does not mean that you may continue using it as a non-conformity. So one of the examples that we have there is there are homestays, um, that have been in existence for ten, fifteen years. And they never obtained a permit for a bed and breakfast permit, which is what that permit would have been at that time. Just because they've been doing it for a long time, doesn't mean that they are now non-conforming. They weren't following the rules to begin with. And so then they don't get to be, uh, uh, brought in under a non-conforming use and continue that use. They're still in violation. Whereas if they had gotten a permit, uh, for a bed and breakfast permit, and then we change the regulations for homestays. They are now non-conforming and they can continue that use.
Subsection B is just declarative of existing law. I mean, subsection B doesn't need to be there. It's, it's basically just to help the user. Um, and, and I think Ms. Brumfeld's point is well taken in that in order to be a legal non-conforming use, it has to be a legal use. You, you can't just establish a non-conformity through a consistent pattern of illegal land use. It has to be legal to start with in order for you to, to gain legal non-conforming status.
Yeah, I guess I was throwing me off. I mean, if it's an illegal land use and it could never be conforming or even non-conforming.
But, 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 but some people may make that argument and, and the reason this is in there is to create people that creatively want to argue, well, I've been doing this for twenty years, thirty years. I'm, I'm a non-conforming use. Well, but you're an illegal non-conforming use.
Okay. You can't be grandfathered in if you're an illegitimate grandfather.
Thank you.
I'm just, I'm trying to come up with a metaphor here. No, no, no.
Commissioner Clayburn, any comments on article?
No comments on ten.
All right. Mr. Ray. Okay, Sandra, um, ten, two, one, C three. And I, and I realize this is part of existing, um, code. But it says a non-conforming use on a portion of parcel may continue all in that portion. Except that a non-conforming quarry or cemetery may be enlarged or extended to either occupy or use an additional area of the parcel. Um, it strikes me that in our GIS, we actually have a natural resource extraction layer. And that this would be an opportunity to fix this, that instead of saying parcel, it should say, um, it should say the. The, the natural resource extraction layer. Um, so they're not just like continuing. If you go to Augusta County, you can see areas that, um, they've expanded mining operations. So they're visible from space. And, and I would hate to see that sort of thing happen in Amaral County where people just keep purchasing more and more properties and expanding it. Without actually coming before the planning commissioner, the board supervisors to gain an extraction, an, an expansion of the extraction layer.
Sure. Um, I think that is hopefully covered under the last sentence, the last phrase of that, uh, of that section. That says, um, identify, uh, uh, other abutting parcels under identical ownership as of the effective date of this article. So when this ordinance is adopted, that's it. Um, you can't keep on buying additional parcels. You have up until that, uh, up until the, that time, so theoretically a year, two years. Um, at which point you can have ownership of additional parcels. Uh, but you cannot expand it. Um, also the, uh, extraction. Um, extraction overlay district. Would not necessarily be in effect on these non-conforming quarries, uh, because they would be non-conforming.
Oh, I, I see. That makes sense. So, so given, so the effective date of this article was, was that also part of our previous ordinance?
Um, I mean, we, we do have that in, um, various sections of the current, current ordinance. But that would just be, you know, stamping a time on it.
So, so it just occurs to me that each time we're doing this, are we just like stamping a new?
Um, in this, in this situation, yeah, uh, that would, that would be the situation.
So, so wouldn't we better just go back to the previous date as of the date that we originally put that? So that we're not giving now, taking everyone that had established that in the interim and now making those, um, allowed when they weren't allowed before.
We can definitely look into that. I am not super familiar with this section of the current ordinance. So I would have to look into it to, to know what it exactly copied says.
I, I still say the wording on this is, the wording on this is unclear to me. That, that it, I understand what you said about the effect day of the article, but it, it just says may be enlarged or extended to occupy or use additional area.
So, so the general rule with, uh, legal nonconforming uses is that they can't be enlarged or extended. However, the, the code here identifies two special instances just based on the nature of the use that over time cemeteries are going to expand. And over time quarries are going to expand, unlike for example, the garage example previously. It's just in the nature of these particular uses that over time they're going to take up more space. And so the county code, at least the current version of the county code, makes an allowance for that and says, we don't consider this, even though you're taking up more space with your core use or your cemetery use, we will not consider that an enlargement or expansion for purposes of the, of the legal nonconforming use.
Yeah, it just seems like they would have a boundary of their quarry, I would think.
Well, and, and the boundary under the current code is properties under the same ownership as of, as of a certain control date. I mean, the alternative would be to not allow that, to say basically you may not have any further expansion, but that would, that would represent a policy shift from what the current ordinance allows in those two instances.
Okay. Well, that's where I was gonna go. Why, why does, why does the action of quarrying or burying what you quarry get an exemption? So that, that is to me a policy question. Why do those two things? Because unless you're, so we're not talking about, we're not talking about giving existing cemeteries. We're saying if, if the existing cemetery is sold, was owned by person A and is now owned by person D, person D can acquire more land until this becomes, this becomes effect and expand the, and, and expand the cemetery without having to come back and go through the legislative process.
And again, I would say that's just inherent in the nature of the uses. Again, over time, cemeteries and quorums, just by the nature of their use, are going to require more real estate than, for example, an auto garage or a restaurant. When, when McDonald's sells more hamburgers, they don't need to expand the restaurant. When, when there are additional people to bury or, or rocks to quarry, it's by nature going to, going to require more land.
Well, I plus issue with the additional area of the parcel and more issue with the, uh, other abutting parcels under identical ownership. This seems more problematic to me. Like, I mean.
Well, I mean, staff can certainly take that back, but, but, but be aware that that would, that would represent a policy change that would need to be approved by the board as well.
And, and I would, and you know, I would, I would argue while Alamo County is a little different, most cemeteries are, have distinct boundaries. And so they aren't, Alamo County is a bit different because 95% of the county is rural. But in those places where 95% of the county is not rural, there are distinct boundaries around cemeteries. For instance, and so I don't, uh, you know, that's why we do this. That's why you get buried on top of each other now as opposed to having side by side plots.
So, so the distinct boundaries under this would be the parcel lines rather than the extent of the current burying area.
I, I understand, I understand.
I guess we're, we're just having trouble with that, the addition, the owner being the, the same owner. Like, so it just seems like Fred Smith could buy the parcel next door. It's the same owner and then he could expand a cemetery without coming to any body and asking if he can have a cemetery on parcel B.
I think that, um, the, I think that the, the most direct path to address that would be to post date this, uh, back to whenever this was initially adopted. For, for the adoption of this article. I think that would be probably, um, there's no more buying of land. It's what you bought before that particular date. So I think that would be, that would be something to consider as we take this, uh, for policy questions.
Right. And just for the record, I'm not against burials or quarries necessarily, but if somebody's going to make a major expansion, I think it should come here.
Should come before some legislative process. I'm against zombies, as everybody knows.
Yes, that, that's misbehaving buried people.
I don't like zombies.
It's nonconforming.
It's definitely, it's definitely nonconforming and it will never be legal.
So where are we leaving this?
I have one.
Before we go there, I just want to make sure we've covered what we've talked about here and we have an action item. Or I guess staff, you'll consider the comments that we've raised and go from there. Okay.
Well, she did, well, she did, she, I think we did have an offering that it would be.
Yeah, one option.
Yeah, I thought that was, that, that feels reasonable to me.
That would, that would be something we'd need to look at. I, again, I don't have the current ordinance pulled up because we have this on the screen. So this would be something that we would look into.
Okay, great. Thank you.
So on D two, is it necessary to have, if the nonconforming use is discontinued for two or more years, the use loses its nonconforming status? Stop. Who cares if there's any equipment or fixtures in it?
Uh, this was kind of to, um, Mr. Herrick's point of people arguing creatively is saying, well, I haven't actually cooked in this restaurant for five years, but my fryer is still in there and it's still got the oil.
Well, then, 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 then my interpretation would mean who cares about your oil? You haven't been using it. Who cares whether or not you, you know, you have rank oil in there.
She's just, she's just getting this from.
Oh, I believe it. I mean, but my, my question would be, you haven't had a restaurant for, for two, for two, for more than two years. It doesn't matter what you, you could have Twinkies in there. It doesn't matter. It's over.
And, and again, this is another section that's declarative of existing law that, that we could just as easily delete this section altogether and the law would still apply. Regarding nonconforming use, that this is, that this is to, to aid, um, the user. And, and as Ms. Brumfeld suggests, um, this is the, the fact that this regardless is in here is to sort of preemptively defuse, uh, creative arguments to the contrary.
It's one of those, um, do not iron while wearing clothing situations on the tag is that you know that it's on there because someone did it.
Hot liquid, those kinds of things. Great. Commissioner Moore?
I don't have any additional questions on ten.
All right. So we've now done Article three and Article ten.
That's it for Articles, right?
That is it. We are out of Articles.
I had, I did have a question though, still.
Does anyone else have anything they would like to say about this?
I have a thing, but he wants to talk.
Commissioner Bibbitt. On ten point, two point two, this is just my, this is just a general question. I remember a long time ago, we were talking about, you know, no, no, a minimum, you're sorry, you shouldn't have done this. A minimum of 25 feet from the right away and from the side. At some point we were going to wrestle with what can be built on a lot. Because by saying what you can build 25 feet from here and 50 feet from here, we are becoming, we are prescriptive of the size of the house. And I remember at one point somebody saying, when we come to this point of, of our work, we will actually have a conversation about what the planning commission and of course the supervisors and the public, what they, how we want to approach side setbacks or is that, I'm looking, side setbacks, rear setbacks. Are we going to be more generous or are we going to be more restrictive? I had a bit of a falling out with your colleague, Mr. Fritz on this because he wanted to put like a hundred feet setbacks on the sides and, you know, 200 feet setbacks from the front and the back. And it's like, oh, so we're really talking about, you can only build a house if you have this size lot.
Is that coming up in a future phase?
And so I wanted, I wanted to make sure that this was not a way to get around that.
No, this is only for nonconforming structures and improvements. This is, um, what, this is not a change. The, these particular requirements, I believe that the 25 feet, um, was, uh, changed actually from a previous requirement of 75 feet. It was reduced, uh, at some point in the past, looking at prior, prior ordinances. We will be looking at setbacks in the district standards in phase three.
Thank you, Chair.
Yes, thank you. Thanks.
I had one more question.
Commissioner Moore and then Commissioner Fireoff.
Okay. Sorry. And this is not about the text. I think it's, it's quite clear and good. Thank you again. Uh, I was really curious about the nonconforming, legal, nonconforming uses. Presumably we're not adding more of those, right? No way to.
So it is possible to add a nonconforming use every time we make an ordinance change. So if there is a use that is conforming now, it is legally conforming. And then we say, you know what? We don't want this use in Alamo County. Get rid of it. They can still continue because they are legally nonconforming.
I see, I see. Yeah, that makes sense. Um, and then I was wondering, do we have some kind of database or, or map of nonconforming uses out there? I'm just curious how many we've got.
We have individual lists of very particular nonconforming uses. We have, uh, lists of all of our county stores. We have some lists of, uh, historic properties. But we do not have an exhaustive list of nonconforming uses.
Okay.
For instance, the, the garage that everyone hailed last week at the intersection, which was a nonconforming use.
I'm not sure that's a legal one.
I'm not saying, I'm not going to say whether that's legal or not. I'm going to say is that as it turned out, the garage that was everyone's favorite garage didn't have a business permit, was not supposed to have a garage in that piece of property. And hopefully, as I said last week, somebody's going to go look at that piece of property with that cute little garage on it that everybody loved down there on Route 20.
Are you talking about the garage with the store? Or are you talking about another garage that was on the applicant's property?
Nope, this is not on the applicant's property. This is, this is further down the street from down the road on Plank Road.
Oh, right. Where they were saying they all like to go get their.
We all like to go. And that piece of property was supposed to be engaged with, with hops. But the hop business didn't work and now all of a sudden there's a garage there that everybody likes to go to.
All right, let's, uh, let's see if we, are we done with, uh, the zoning modernization phase one? I'm sorry. Yes.
It's really small. Um, earlier tonight you flashed up an SUP checklist. I, I, my question is, is that final? It just said example draft or something.
So the, uh, that is what's currently on the, uh, Alamo County Community Development website as an example of the checklist. So when, um, when the staff go through a pre-application meeting with an applicant, they take that checklist and they actually clarify which things have to be in the, in the, um, application that's upcoming and which things are not required because they don't apply. Um, and then that is sent back to them.
I have a question then. I was curious, like there's, um, nothing there about like significant vegetation, stream buffers, those kind of things. Is that because they're only required on the site plan?
So that's only one page of the, I think it is a three-page application. So that was just an example.
Okay. So you think there is more stuff about environmental conditions? I mean, I assume so, but I'm, I didn't call it up on my tablet while.
Vegetation and landscaping are required on, on those particular kinds of applications.
The, to show the existing ones.
Yes.
Okay. Sorry. You just, you flashed it really quick and I got all excited. All right. That's it.
Awesome. All right. Staff, anything else from us?
Um, no, we have a lot of comments to work through. I've covered a couple of pages on my notes. Ms. Cobb has also been taking probably better notes than I have. So we will be working to, uh, get these, get these in this draft ordinance.
Great. Well, thank you for your work. It's extraordinary and you guys are, are great. Thanks. Great job answering questions, too. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. Let's move on to three and a half minutes. Let's move on to committee reports. Oh. I'm sorry. All right. Let's take, uh, can we take a five minute break?
Sure, sure.
That was after copy.
All right. Are we live?
Yes, you are.
Thank you. Okay, we are moving now on to item number four, committee reports. Are there any committee reports from the commissioners? I'll start with Commissioner Moore.
I do. Uh, was it the, uh, MPO Citizens Transportation Advisory Committee earlier, uh, I guess that was last week. Got a presentation on moving toward 2050, the long range transportation plan, which they're looking to adopt in May. Uh, among the higher priority projects, uh, on the plan, including, these are actually, some of these include, uh, projects that are already have applications submitted, just in case the funding doesn't come through, they still want them on the plan. That includes the Rio Road Peanut, which is the, uh, the delightful name for the, the sort of double, uh, uh, roundabout. Uh, another, uh, in the county is Barrick's Corridor, um, that kind of between Georgetown and, and the Kroger there. Another one in the county, just general Rio improvements between Huntington Road and Greenbrier, also ranked higher. And then, uh, Fifth Street Multimodal Improvements was another one, uh, higher ranked. So the Fifth Street Extended. We also got a presentation on sort of how they selected the smart scale alternatives, uh, that were submitted. Yay. These are similar to the ones that we've talked about at, uh, previous reports, uh, like the I sixty four and Fifth Street Interchange, sidewalks along US two fifty on Pan Tops, and again, the Barrick's Corridor. We had a couple of new members on there, uh, and, uh, there was some commentary for sure about, uh, just the need to be more visionary with our bike planning and, and heavier weighting than bike and ped gets now, um, on the applications that we submit. So.
Awesome. Thank you. I bet we have a lot of reports on, that are similar to that, just in different areas. Commissioner Bibbitt?
I have no report.
All right. Commissioner Moore?
Yeah. So the, um, the, the CCAC met, um, and we had a nice report about the, um, from the fire chief about the, about fire rescue. And, and that was very interesting. Uh, some of the things I learned that I didn't realize what the training requirements were for to be, um, a volunteer firefighter. And like, it's, it's a lot of training. And the other thing too, is that they only have, even when they have a whole lot of applicants that want to be firefighters, that they only have a couple of slots that they can offer. And so it's very competitive even to get those slots for a volunteer position. So that was very interesting. Um, there's also a discussion about how, um, the, the, it's anticipated that, um, volunteer fire departments like Croze will over time transition to being professional. And I'm sure the tension around that and sort of like how they were wanting to do that in a fair way and an open, open way. So that was, that was kind of interesting as well. Thank you. Commissioner Clayburn?
No report from me.
She carries on.
Uh, the MPO tech met, but looks like this from, from your, from your agenda, it sounds like it was a recap. So then most of them, same thing on both needs.
Thanks. Commissioner Fireoff?
Miraculously, there was a meeting, uh, with Historic Preservation Committee of Alamo County. And we were able therefore to achieve quorum and elect the same officer slate. So, yep, they did the business of the new year. One thing that was curious that we, we ended up solving, we, this is probably in the weeds for you all, but there was an issue where, um, I, I don't want to call it an issue, but it was a difficulty. Uh, so one of the roles of the group is that we go out and photograph and document structures that are going to be torn down that are very historically significant. We, you know, we try to talk people out of it and, and they have actually successfully talked some people out of, uh, taking things down. But it turned out that because any of the two members being together constituted there's subcommittees, and if two members were present of the three people, then there was a quorum, then they had to declare a public meeting. So that, that when we would go out, only one person could go to document the structure because if they brought another person with them, they had to notice it as a meeting. Which you can imagine somebody who's tearing down a structure doesn't want to notice a public meeting, right? Everyone to come out and, you know, do whatever they do, protest or whatever. So we abandoned, we abolished the subcommittee. So that if two members of the committee happen to go out, they will not be a quorum of a committee. I thought it was very creative. That's what we came up with. And then the other thing is that we really desperately need new members. To anyone who's listening out there in TV or recording land, that, um, we have six members. Twelve would be the full committee. And if we had more members, it would be easier to establish quorum. So if you have any colleagues who are upright and breathing and care about historic preservation, we'd really like to have them apply. I'm going to be writing a pithy, maybe even sexy email about being a member of this group and sending it around. Cause we, you know, it is really interesting work. Notwithstanding my boring rendition of electing officers and committees, but. Um, notwithstanding my boring rendition of electing officers and committees, but it, it is really important work and I hope that if you know people who are in architecture field, the real estate field, um even just a history buff, who knows a lot about the county, that would be most welcome.
Commissioner Firehawk, you should connect with AIA Central Virginia. And uh, I'm happy to, to make that connection, but they can push it to their membership and uh have a targeted audience, if you will.
That would be great. Yeah, I was thinking of like, you know, the historic preserve, the architecture historian faculty at UVA and the Blue Ridge Home Builders and, you know, but I'll definitely um connect with you to get that.
I'll email you now.
Yeah, because otherwise I'll be filling out some spam, you know, form on a website, so uh connections are much appreciated. Anyway, I'll be drafting that this week and sending that around, but um please send us, please send us people. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you. Um, I'll report out on two, but I'll actually combine them because they were an identical agenda. Um, and that is the Pantops Community Advisory Committee in the Fifth and Avon Street, CAC. Uh, there were really three areas of focus. One was we were briefed by uh our board members on the fiscal, well, actually it was by the staff, it was county staff that briefed us on the, the twenty twenty-five budget. And um traffic and safety, the Assistant Police, the Chief of Police uh briefed us on traffic and safety and it was interesting. Hopefully, um, I think the slide presentation is probably available online. It's really fascinating to look at accident data and to understand how they collect accident data, especially from drivers that are impaired and deaths. Uh, their, their accident data is actually more accurate in accidents that occurred and resulted in deaths, unfortunately, because there's no way to taint the evidence, I guess, in a sense, or. So, um, and it gives them new rights. I'm, I'm speaking about things I really don't know anything about, uh, just what I heard. And then also transportation projects, as I think some of us, we, we reported out on and a couple drew some questions. Uh, not a lot of questions, but one was the circle that's located at, I think it's Old Lynchburg. Bear with me one second. It's, yeah, Old Lynchburg Road and the access to the Fifth Street um police station, Albemarle Police Station, there'll be a circle there. Some questioned whether or not there was enough traffic volume to warrant a circle. The answer was yes. That came out as, as being one of the, the top areas that needed it. Um, and then also uh the police, uh the Assistant Chief of Police mentioned that speed cameras will soon come to the area. And they're starting in Commissioner Bevan's area, which is right next to Albemarle, Albemarle High School. Um, so those were the, those were the highlights. Yeah, that's serious. All right, uh, we'll move on to review of the Board of Supervisors meeting. Mr. Barnes?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, so there's been numerous uh budget meetings this past month. Um, the one meeting that was, which was all was the one was March twentieth. Um, they did discuss, we had a long work session on development area and rural area land use, transportation issues. The community facilities will be going to back to the board. Again, as we're talking about goals and objectives, and that will, the last of that tranche of goals and objective stuff will be community facilities on April third. Um, I'll get a little more into land use in a second here. Uh, also at that meeting, um, the something to come before you, but may interest you was that the county adopted guidelines um in accordance with the Public Private Transportation Act that allows for um other entities to, I, and I'm not gonna be able to give you all the details, but essentially for other entities to approach the county um and, you know, offer to build a piece of infrastructure that the county has detailed that it wants. And I think you could also, Mr. Herrick, if you'd like to hop in on the other details, you can, but um anyhow, another potential method for delivering transportation projects within our community. Um, the other thing that was on their agenda was um the Gray Star property, the old Ivy Residences was looking to see their uh taking expansion of central sewer services um to that facility, and that was another item they took um and passed with the uh with the Board of Supervisors twentieth.
What is the outcome of that discussion?
That particular one?
Yeah.
It was granted.
Okay, thanks.
Um, so AC forty-four update, if I may?
Sure, yeah. Good segue.
Yeah, so we are, I promise you this calendar, it's coming. There was a giant whiteboard in our conference room with, you know, a calendar that goes all the way to the next year with steps for moving through. The next thing we'll be doing, we'll come back to you with the goals and objectives, the action steps. We're also in the background sort of writing what we think might be some of the big moves. I think it'll help us as we're talking with you all, sort of frame how this stuff start plays out, helping write some of the action steps. So we're trying to be intentional and, and, and big picture. But uh when we release the action steps, there'll be action steps for all eight chapters will be released at the same time. And then we're gonna work through those with you all. And I think the intent right now is to sort of pull forward the stuff for the development area and rural area first, and then sort of deal with the other stuff afterwards. I think it'll give us better context. Um, and also talk a little bit about activity centers, which I think is gonna be an interesting concept that we can push forward for you all.
Okay.
So um, dates wise, I think we're talking, I should know this off the top of my head, but I think we're coming back with some of those action steps in May to you all. And then June, um, July and August will be busy months, so I've warned you before. So um, that's essentially what we're doing with the conference plan right now.
Just one question. I think you are also with the scheduling review, you're looking at opportunities for public input and layering that in so we can see where those are and just to.
Thank you. Great. Commissioner Chair, that, that is exactly what we are, are doing. You will, there is gonna be a whole engage. And by the way, right now, I think it's probably also important, underline, we are in the middle of our, another work group. So they've had a couple meetings. I think they're holding another meeting, reaching out to members of the community, that whole idea of empowering people who are part of this work group to actually push themselves out to their church groups or homeowners associations, et cetera. So there, that is an ongoing effort right now. Uh, thank you.
Great, thank you. Good updates. Okay, how about any new business?
I, I don't know if this is new business or not, but I'm assuming that everyone's been receiving these po- these postcards with uh the, with the Croze insignia on them? You have not, you have not been receiving these? Okay. Well, I, no, I'm not gonna share these with you. Um, these are four postcards that have come to my residence, which is fine. People can mail me all they want to. But the tone of them is not very helpful in helping to understand what the individuals who are pushing this out would like us to do vis a vis Croze. That's because they're not named. They just bring up issues. But I will suggest that if any of you know them or come across them, you know, they have these little quotes by Malcolm Gladwell and Miriam Webster and Eleanor Roosevelt. The one that I found very disturbing was a, a quote from Henry Ford. Those of you who may know, Henry Ford was a known Nazi sympathizer. And in fact, it was Hitler who said that he decided how he was going to go about the elimination of Jews in Germany by watching what Henry Ford was suggesting about that here in the United States at that time. So I would just suggest to the people who want to capture at least my attention, don't send me Nazi sympathizing materials to my house. There are other people who can inspire you that don't want, that didn't have a, have a hand in creating a period in the United States where we almost lost our democracy again, like we may be trying to lose it now. So if you know any of these individuals, please tell them that they should clean up their act and at least identify themselves so we can engage in con- conversation.
Thank you. Any other new or old business? No? Okay, uh, items for follow-up?
I was just wondering, have we heard anything about when the stream, sorry, when the um repairing buffer overlay district is gonna come back?
I don't have any information for you on that. I can follow up on that.
All right, with that, I will adjourn this meeting of the Planning Commission and our next meeting will be April twelfth, twenty twenty-four at six PM. Thanks.